We're going, I'm gonna open the meeting of the Berlin School Committee for January 11th. And I'd like to move.
January 11th?
Hmm?
January 11th? Nope. Today would be February 8th.
Yeah, February 8th. I'm looking at the wrong paper. Sorry. We're in eighth.
Wow, I just gained some time.
Oh, you're sweet.
And I'd like to move, if there's no objections, I'd like to move the execution of the 2011-2013 contract with the Berlin Teachers Association to top of the agenda before we meet with the Finance Committee. No objections? Nope. Alrighty. Well, we have two copies. And I don't, I think we've already taken a vote when we were in.
Sign more than two.
What's that?
Sign more than one.
Oh, okay.
In June.
Yes.
It was a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, I think that was.
The execution of the full contract.
Yeah. Okay. So, we have two copies. And would you like to sign first, Val?
What's more important is, is the country, is the golf course open throughout the snow?
Not yet. I'll come over there.
Get the snow off the roof.
Yes.
Or the frost.
Take those up there and let Val Bradley of the, or one of the Berlin Selectmen who was a part of our negotiations, sign both of the copies. And then the School Committee will sign both of the copies. And we're pleased that we have another contract with the Berlin Teachers. And we thank you for the time you gave for these.
Okay.
I'm gonna let Cheryl fill in the blank above.
Oh, yeah, put together.
Okay. You have a date?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when the Finance Committee comes down, they will either stay with us and meet here in our room, or they'll ask us to come to the other room for their meeting. But until then, we are working on payables and payroll awards. And the consent agenda has the minutes of January 18th open session to be approved. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Someone second?
Anything to be said on the minutes? I had, I had just a couple of, well, kind of questions, really. At the bottom of page one, in the last, one of the last sentences, it says, "The checks need to be designated for what their intended expenditure is." Does it need to be, or is it, should it be, can be designated?
Oh, must be. Any donation must specify what the expenditure is for.
Oh, alright. I didn't know that.
Otherwise, we could not spend it because we need to know what the donor intended the expenditure to be for.
Okay. Alright. That's my question.
No, good question.
And what was the other one? Oh, on the second page, at the very top, says, "The committee directed administration to send a letter to Parks and Recreation Department." I think I would, just to be clear, we don't have a Parks and Recreation Department, it would just be the Recreation Committee. That was all I got? To send a letter? Yeah, there's a "the" missing. The committee directed the administration? Just to get picky here. So, with those small changes, if you will agree, you'll take your votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. And the Berlin Finance Committee has joined us. So, we'll move to that portion, which was top of the agenda. Would you like Mike to start, sort of little preview?
Yeah, assuming you have new, new last minutes, right?
We haven't changed the budget yet.
Probably the biggest thing we're starting with is seeing what our estimate for our assessment was with the hot numbers.
Yeah. We, that, we're still waiting to have certified, I can with Ms. Keegan talk. First, I'm Mike DeBrul, by the way, I'm the Superintendent, so I've met your gentleman before, so.
Oh, would you like?
I think that would be nice.
Why don't you introduce yourselves, Mike?
Scott Schultz.
Everyon, Manicusa.
Phil Tomassino.
Scott Hawkins.
Great to meet you gentlemen. Do you want to talk about the assessment?
Certainly. And we had recently met with the Boylston School Committee. And obviously, we've met with all, all committees regarding the budgets. And we recently met with the Boylston Board of Selectmen. And then this evening, we'll also be discussing, we knew we were coming here and discussing the Berlin budget with you also. Just over a week ago, the state came out with preliminary numbers for minimum contribution, and also preliminary Chapter 70. And these are main components, components of preparing the assessment. So, we were, you know, we knew this meeting was coming up. And so, very soon, we were preparing the preliminary assessment numbers based on those figures from the state.
Okay.
By the way, this is Courtney Keegan, I didn't introduce her. This is, she's our new Finance Director.
Hi, that's why I met a couple of you at one meeting.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, but thank you. So, that, I will be getting that out very, very shortly.
Maybe like by next week, or?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, we've just been waiting. I mean, the Governor's Budget just came out, you know, the week, last week. And so, we're waiting to get some good hard numbers on the Governor's Budget. And either Chapter 70, as you know both Berlin and Boylston since, I mentioned Boylston because it affects the region, which obviously affects Berlin. But all those numbers are flat. I mean, we're not gonna get any more additional aid, so far, to Chapter 70 from the, from the state, or is there gonna be any local aid to either towns, any more local aid to either towns at this point in time in the Governor's Budget? A lot of things can happen between now and April, but that's what they're, that's what's right now, we're looking at, other thing too is regional transportation. I think there's like 38% reimbursement for regional transportation in the Governor's Budget. Typically, it has come in at least 50, okay? And in some years, it's gone even higher than that. So, obviously, we're gonna develop the assessment based upon what we know we have right now. But things could change. And a lot of things can still change in the, in the future. And I think sometimes that's the danger of having an early budget. But we don't see any more anticipated state aid in Chapter 70, or, or local aid right now in the Governor's Budget. I do hear rumors that there's a possibility that they may not increase the bottom line of local aid, or Chapter 70 aid to schools. But they may go internally into certain line items, or certain categories in the budget, like circuit breaker for special education, for example. That's an area that they may go in and maybe decide to increase if they have, if they have more funds. Of course, the more money they increase in circuit breaker, the more we apply it to the budget, the more we lower the budget. Which in effect, was the assessment, I mean, at the regional level, but particularly at the, at the Berlin, at the Berlin Elementary level also. So, awaiting, I think, for some of those hard and fast figures to come out. Other things, we, we know, we have transportation, we have a five-year contract, we know we're gonna spend on transportation, those figures should be pretty solid. And we know pretty much what we, we know what we have to spend on school choice. That's also in there at this particular point in time. And I've given all that information to the School Committee in terms of what they wanna do with the budget, if they wanna apply more school choice or not, apply more school choice, or, or the percentage that, that the FinCom, or is it FinCom, or is it Advisory Board to the FinCom, or?
FinCom.
It's the FinCom, okay. A lot of different boards. Don't step on anyone's toes here. But, you know, in terms of what the guiding, the guiding light is, of course, from, you know, from you people, in terms of what you wanna see, or what you're looking at for a budget perspective coming in now. So, we have a couple of different budgets that we've given to the, to the School Committee that they can look at, and they can adjust as they, as they see fit. And that's, you know, that's really, really where we are at this point in time. Like I said, the numbers have only come out, the real hard numbers only, only came out last week. So, and then also, we, as Ms. Courtney said, we did meet with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom last Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah. The nights tend to blur a little bit after a while, not sure. November Town, I may want meeting them, there's just so many of them around. But we actually have some guidance for them too, in terms of looking at budgets over there. I mean, not that it affects Berlin Elementary, but somewhat affect that, could have some, somewhat affect at the, on the region. I mean, the budget that we've developed, and, and that we've forwarded to the Board of Selectmen, and to the School Committee, is a little bit different budget than what people have had in the past. We've developed a budget based on just total transparency. So, we developed it as a line item expenditure budget. So, anybody can flip through that budget, and they can see immediately in that budget what it costs, what it costs to run, let's say, the Berlin Elementary School, or the Tohoto Regional High School, line by line by line. Not only that, you can see an expenditure, a two-year expenditure period of actually what we spent, the actual budget. This budget here, if there's any increases, we have a variance column, we can immediately see the increases that are in those budgets. If the increase is significant or dramatic, we've developed a narrative here that talks about all those line items in terms of why they might have increased, or significantly decreased. That is also in, in the budget. I mean, some of the big things in the budget that we have to worry about is the ed stimulus package is gone. And for that, you know, we had about almost $30,000 in ed stimulus funds. That's, that was the Obama legislation during the Great Recession, that's gone this year. Oil, oil has been a problem, it's gone up to 321 a gallon. I just got my drop yesterday at the house, and I wish I could have bought it at 321 a gallon. But it's through a clap, we do that clap, the bidding process, it's still an increase that we had from, from last year, so we're taking that into account. Obviously, the School Committees in general are looking for a new superintendent of schools. And there is an increase in the salary line for the superintendent of schools, in order for that position to be, to be competitive. Basically, in the past, I did a salary search for the School Committee, and we were basically last in central Massachusetts in terms of, in terms of that salary for running a three district school setup. So, there was an increase up the range, up to 135, that was, that was in, in that budget. We have applied, in this particular budget, $200,000 from school choice towards the Berlin Elementary budget to lower the budget. So, we applied $200,000 worth of school choice at this particular point in time to the budget. As I had mentioned to the Committee before, the school choice funds are not intended to be a piggy bank, where you just keep hoarding cash, it grows and grows and grows. You're supposed to spend that money on the best, on the education for students. And the School Committee, the School Committee has done that. But this year, we've really put quite a bit towards that, almost, like I said, for $200,000 towards our school choice funds, towards, towards the budget, and reducing the budget. So, we have other things we've talked about with the School Committee, and as you know, we, Berlin last year, we eliminated three, three positions last year. We also reduced the central office staff by the full-time working coordinator and the, and the tech coordinator were eliminated last year.
Were the three positions, three full-time positions, or how?
They were three full-time positions. Yes, they were.
Right. And some of the questions that I have are, the fact, you know, the sixth grade will eventually be moving to the Tohoto or Boylston region. And now, because the school's gonna be anticipated opening mid-year for next fiscal year, is the sixth grade assumed to be a full year at BMS, or?
Yes, there will be, there will be no movement of the sixth grade. The game plan was for the current seven through 12 to move into the New Tohoto Middle High School in roughly, you know, December to January of 2013. We anticipate the building will be completed by around Thanksgiving. Then, of course, we'll have a punch list, we'll get, we'll get created for things that need to be corrected that aren't 100%, it's just typical construction. Going through the building with everyone on punch list, but we feel that, so we'll be, start the move will be right around Christmas Vacation, then we hope to be in there, grade seven through 12 in January of 2013. Not too nuts about a mid-winter move, that's the way it is. And the reason for that is, we need to get in there, so as soon as we go in there, we can go over, we can start demolishing the other building. Okay, so we need to get, have that building taken down, and then we need to start working on, or continue to work on, really increase the pace of completing all the athletic fields. Right now, we're, we're through the gracious, not Recreation Department, not Parks and Rec, Recreation Department here. Parks and Rec and Boylston, been great in terms of letting us use their fields, particularly soccer fields, any of the other facilities they have, basketball facilities for practice, I mean, all those things. And they've been really great to help us there. Baseball, we've had to rent the field, because we don't have a legitimate baseball field that's up to regulation. So, we've been renting that from Clinton last year, but this year, we'll have to relocate and find another, another field. So, in August of 2013, that's when the sixth grade move will go up to the high school. And at that point in time, a new agreement will need to be orchestrated for the New Tohoto Regional High School as a sixth grade, you know, regional agreement. So, that will, that will come out of this building. And we'll also be able to get the benefits of regional transportation for another grade level for both towns, because the regional transportation will be six through 12. As you know, there's no transportation for unified school districts like Berlin Elementary at this point in time in, in the, in the state budget. But regional transportation, there would be reimbursement for that once, once they are in that building full-time.
You say the agreement would need to be modified. I thought that was part of what we did a couple of years ago at Town Meeting.
Could be, I'm not sure. Was it?
Does there still need to be a vote, or?
I still think there's something that, we did modify it, didn't we not? I think we did modify it, but I'm not sure we did everything we needed to do.
Yeah, I think you need another, I can look into that, of course, we'll have that set up. But I think you need to have another vote in the following spring for a formal six through 12.
Okay.
But, you know, I could be wrong. I could be wrong, I'd have to look back and see too.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't know.
We couldn't modify it before it was there.
I don't see that as being problematic.
No, I think we have to modify the agreement based on the numbers.
Too late.
November of 2013. Five and six from Berlin Memorial will go to?
Just six.
Just six.
Well, five will be going to six, which is going to.
Right.
So, that group will go, like, as one whack, which will be good for them.
In 2013, in the August, yeah.
There'll be a whole bunch of them at once, instead of one at a time. That's a positive thing, I didn't mean that as criticism. I think that's good that they'll have some support from each other.
Now, I've heard, but haven't, get your information on it, is because of that mid-year move, there's concern about funding that mid-year move to this, is there?
That's really in the auspices of the School Building Committee. But there, my understanding is there was a contingency, you know, fund to allow for, for that, that move. Plus, a lot of the, a lot of the refurbishment of, let's say, furniture, labs, computers, athletic equipment, that is all in the, the proposal, you know, from, from the state for, for the, for the grant that we have to, or the reimbursement that we have to open that building. So, that's all in there. So, for example, tomorrow night, Ms. Keegan's gonna meet with the Subcommittee to discuss the purchasing of the cafeteria equipment to operate the cafeteria at, at that building. Later on, I think also at five o'clock, there's what they call an FFNE.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, we'll be meeting to talk about furniture for the building. So, the state will watch you so much money per student headcount for these various areas for, to buy this equipment to furnish and operate the schools. All of that, that all is taking, takes place under the School Building Committee. And move, and moving into there, transferring those move is somewhere within that budget. I have to go look at that line item, I don't know. And then, of course, we do have a contingency budget, okay, which all school building projects do. And so, if it's not out of there, may come out of there to make that move over to that school, whatever we're going to move over. We're in a process of determining that right now. I mean, what textbooks are we taking over? Are we taking over any existing cafeteria equipment? Are we taking over computers? I mean, what are we, any furniture that we may be taking over there? You know, that is being, those things are being studied right now in terms of what's gonna go over there.
Okay. And regarding the teacher contracts, where are we right now? Will the BMS at Tohoto, I mean, are we, are we under contract?
You're under three-year contracts at both Tohoto and at, and at Berlin Elementary School.
Do they both start at the same time, or?
Uh, yeah.
What stage are we at?
I think they do. I'm just negotiating the Boylston one right now, so I gotta keep all these contracts in my head.
We just signed one tonight. We just signed one tonight through 2013.
I think they put meditation, I think it's the same.
So, Berlin was, is through 2013, so we're in year two of that, or?
No, we just signed tonight.
For this year.
For, yes, for this, no, I think it was, um.
It's gonna be a fight.
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than a, yeah, we have the contract right here.
Yeah. You have it, or I have it.
No, it's one, one year contract.
We did a four-year with Tohoto. It was a one and a three, but we were.
Yeah, some of those were contracts existing from last year, so you're working backwards on, on the contracts.
Which will be good.
Because they weren't settled. So, they'll be working without a contract.
Right.
It is.
Yeah, Tohoto, yeah, Tohoto, I think it's necessary to, we look probably at the contract before the teachers, you know, we take on sixth grade.
We didn't type in the dates.
The region, but I don't know if Berlin will make a difference or not.
Do they have a mandate, or?
Two thou, right now, it's August 25th, 2000, well, that's for this one here, 2011, ending August 24th, 2013.
Okay, I think that covers two years, then?
12, but actually, it does, but then we were bargaining for 10 and 11 till we settle 10 and 11.
Okay, settle 10 and 11. Okay, so basically, overall, it's a three-year contract that?
It's easily to get done.
By time, by time they get settled, you're already, you're in year two of the three-year contract. And what were the?
Right, right, right. Yeah, the next contract dates that will come up will be 13, 14.
Okay, and what are, like, the highlights of changes usually, anything, usually, what's the salary?
Contract, I think, was fairly straight, pretty straightforward, I think, was it this year? This year was at point, see, I didn't take, I didn't take my notes, my, my notes, and normally I have those quite available. I think it was at point five, just at this maximum step.
For, click for when?
The current year. Then was, was it one after that, and then two after that? And they're all below three, I mean, I could say that.
Maybe we can do is, if you can maybe email those.
We can probably, how about the memorandum, maybe email the memorandum to Scott, which has just the highlights, the changes.
Sure.
Do you have my email address that I set it up?
Yes, yeah, he probably does, because you've sent an email to him.
And likewise, the same numbers for Tohoto.
Sure.
Was it covered?
Those are about the same too. I mean, it's like, you know, point five of teachers at maximum, then I think Tohoto is like 1.25%. I, was it 1.75? I mean, there's, there's all kinds of splits in there, depending on how many years you've been employed.
Yeah, whether it's straightforward, 2% and 3% or anything like that.
Yeah, they're not a straightforward.
For half the year, it'll be this, a point five, and then the second half is something else. So, that's why I think it'd be better if he emails that to you.
See the details of it.
Nothing extravagant at all. I'll send that to you.
Okay.
For those.
Do you have anything, Steph?
You're gonna do, at some point, we'll be meeting with you for feedback from yourselves?
Well, yes, I mean, we'll definitely need another.
Or do you have feedback tonight, or?
Actually, well, without knowing, like, the Tohoto assessment, I mean, we know, anticipating, ours is probably climbing just by looking at, you know, last year's sixth grade, what went in compared to Boylston's. Till we really have that number, I mean, I just know, I think, what was the number here of, for, was like 324,000 was the total Tohoto increase? But till we see how that's broken down between Berlin share and Boylston share, I mean, like last year, we had every penny, pretty much, of the increase because of the, our assessment had gone up. So, it's hard to even say, you know, what kind of numbers you should be shooting for. I mean, you do have, assuming, I know Courtney died, with the budget kickoff, we went over and kind of indicated, you know, what the two and a half percent is, and, you know, kind of gave a range of what funds are even available, assuming we, you know, go to the max on the levy. So, you have that to, you know, to view. Right now, we're still literally getting in information from other budgets. And of course, we just got, you know, the Governor's Budget also two weeks ago. It was actually positive, at least initially, for Berlin, because his, his state aid, basically after you get the charges and all that stuff, we have a net gain of 60,000 right now compared to what the actuals were present fiscal year. So, at least that looks good for us initially.
So, what, what do you think would be the net, your net revenue then, gain for next year for the town?
Let's see, I think we were with the two and a half percent, and looking at what we had extra from the new growth, I mean, this year, we have practically no new growth, anticipating it was, it was, I wanted to say, it was around 300 something.
Is it not, right? I'd love to, Mike brought you back there.
Yeah, I did bring my summary sheets. Though, I mean, we've already had things, you know, eat into it, our Worcester County retirement assessment, any of that. You know, we've already seen, we have some interesting things going on in the town regarding some retirements, that's resulting in also pay of, like, their vacation, and stuff like that. So, you know, there is, there's quite a few things that are quickly eating into those five.
Scott, historically, has there ever been, like, a, and this would be for the Board too, because I, I don't know, has there ever been, like, historically, a split between municipal government and schools regarding the new revenue? You know, like 60 for out of you, 90, 10 for schools?
No, I know, I've heard, I've heard that's how Boylston, as usually, and at least not since I've been on the Committee, have we had anything specifically laid out? Because there are, every year is different, and there are unpredictable things. And, you know, especially, like, with the schools, the Boylston assessment, or the Berlin-Boylston regional assessment is, I mean, it's huge. And one of the things mentioned at the kickoff is, we need to, I think, do a little better job of watching when, like, for a while there, when I first joined the Committee, Tohoto budget, we were getting favorable numbers. Our percentage was going down.
Sure.
And it was even becoming more favorable to us financially, because Boylston couldn't meet their number, and of course, because it was like a two-third, you know, or like one-third of it, you know, whatever they couldn't meet, you know, they couldn't meet 200,000 of it, well, that cut ours by another 100,000.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't, I think what we probably weren't quite as strict with is watching, you know, the total departments, BMS obviously is a big piece of it, to make sure that they still stayed tight, because now we're all of a sudden, you know, we're in, like, I think, anticipating it to be like the fourth year of seeing our assessment increase. And it's, I think logical to assume that most of the time, you're not gonna want to cut Tohoto's budget, or with whatever funding Berlin can provide, because you're gonna, it's like gonna be a triple cut, right? If we, if we can't meet 100,000, that's another 200,000 off of, for, off of Boylston share, right? Takes a big cut to Tohoto, makes more easier to say, BMS is probably gonna take a hit. I mean, just from a pure number standpoint. So, I think we have to make sure that, you know, that we kind of don't get to the point of, okay, we, we can fund one school, not the other, because, you know, fund one, because the other ones, we're getting something favorable, but one of these years, it's not gonna be favorable to us. And I think that's where you just basically got to the point with BMS last year, I mean, they took the brunt of the hit on that. And, you know, unless the number is significantly changed, anticipating that, you know, our assessment is higher, you're probably gonna look at BMS having another hit. I mean, obviously, you're gonna make the decision about which, we usually have me down to the point of deciding which.
I'm not gonna make the decision to school boards.
Right. We never really got to the point of saying, which school is going to, you know, because you're probably gonna be short of what you're gonna, we're all those certain. Right, we, we, we never really got to the point of saying, which school is going to, you know, because you're probably gonna be short of what you're gonna, we're not, we're almost certainly gonna be short, probably, of what you're asking for right now. So we usually never got it down to say, we expect it to come off BMS. I mean, the people in the town will make the ultimate decision, but usually, we leave it up to the school committee to, you know, figure out which school, though, you're gonna balance that, balance that around. So, but as soon as we, I think, get that assessment number, I think we can give you a little more accurate.
We, we've done a ton of work on that this week, Scott. I mean, now that we have the governor's budget out, we basically have met, as soon as that was out, all the administrative team got together, so I immediately started to work out numbers for the Boyleston Elementary School, work out numbers for Berlin Elementary School, and, and obviously Tohato. So we had another meeting, as a matter of fact, yesterday, and I'll be sending out a lot of information to the Boyleston School Committee as it pertains to Boyleston Elementary, but I'll also be sending quite a bit of information to the Regional Committee, just on some of the numbers that we have that we're working through from that side of it. Because, I mean, it isn't related, I mean, maybe the high, the high school assessment. And, and we're actually, we're meeting this Friday, the administrative team again, just to talk about the Tohato budget, specifically the Tohato budget. And the numbers that we now have, and how those numbers are gonna play out, and how it's gonna affect that particular school. And we're doing all kinds of different scenarios, looking at additional revenue that we know that we may get from the Boyleston Board of Select, and we have a pretty good idea what that's gonna be, how that applies to both schools, different kinds of proportionments to both schools. Okay, we put those into the gristmill, then we say, well, this is what Boyleston Elementary is gonna look like, this is what Tohato's gonna look like, uh, maybe you don't like those numbers quite like that, maybe we gotta change, we gotta modify them, or, and, and adjust them a little bit to, you know, to make them, to make, make it more fairer for, for both schools to give the quality kind of education program we want for all those kids. Same thing for Berlin, you know, for Berlin Elementary and for that assessment, too. Now that, once we get our assessment gets certified, too, then we have, E and D, which is a, is a, is a big player in this, circuit breaker, breaker is a big player in this, school choice is a big player in this.
Right. So the last piece for us that we should know, once we have that, is next Wednesday, we're meeting with ACABET. And that's been favorable to us over the last few years. So that could be a big wild card, too. I mean, we are small, I mean, our percentage ownership is less than four percent there, but I also know typically, they've been very good lately, have been able to give us some numbers really early, because they've been using excess funds to, you know, make sure it didn't hit the towns. Well, the fact that they were willing to wait until February fifteenth tells me that they're probably having a harder time with their budget, to make sure, just like I said, they've used, you know, what people have done, they dipped into their rainy day funds to, you know, to soften this. And now we're at a time in that year where there probably isn't the rainy day funds. We'll know more next Wednesday, but that's our, probably our last big one. So once we have the assessment for Tohato, and we have ACABET, we'll likely have at least all the requested numbers, so we can give a starting point after that of, okay, this is how much we're over budget, and, you know, we can start looking at what's gonna take to bring it down.
I know that historically, the last two, three years, the, I think the percentage-wise increases that received in the town have been between two and a half and three, two and a quarter and three. The last three years, at least that's the figures I got from, from Dennis. When I asked him for those figures at one time, I just wanted to see how ACABET compared to, you know, to the other schools in terms of their percentage increases. Even though I know you're a percentage-wise, in terms of the number of students, they're smaller than some of the other entities, but sometimes percentages are misleading, too.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's two percent of a hundred dollars is not the same as two percent of ten thousand, you know, I'll talk to the finance group, you know what I mean? So it's, uh, but still, they're there, they're there, you know?
Yeah, and once we have those final numbers, we will, and what we'll first send out is our own spreadsheet, which is what you see in the town report, of what everybody's requesting, not what we recommend yet, just to get, so everybody gets to see, you know, what everybody's asking for, so everybody can pick on each other and play. So at least they know where we're starting from, and we'll, we'll go from there, so.
And we'd love to sit down, chat with anybody about, wanna go over the budget line by line, be happy to do it. I mean, any variances of theirs you'd like to go through, be glad to do it, if you just wanna talk whole numbers, be glad to do that, whatever, whatever you need, just let us know and we'll, we'll come.
Yes, well, we definitely anticipate another meeting, because you are a high, a big percentage of the overall budget.
Every school system is.
You are dependent on what's going on in the state.
Okay, what town you drop into, or city, the, you know, the school department is always gonna come in anywhere from, you know, fifty to seventy percent of the budget, depending upon the town, the city, the, it's just, I, I know with the big gorilla in the room, and, and, and I understand that, you know, I mean, after doing it for a long time, but it's, it's no matter where you go, that's, that's those splits wind up to be. But we wanna make sure, too, that, I'm sure that, you know, there's someone there to plow the roads and, and, and do all the things that need to be done for municipal, the services that you need to provide in municipal government, too, for the people that are here.
And for us, it's been mostly trying to ward off a lot of, you know, anything really big cuts until our mitigation funds from the malls ever kick in. And that's been, you know, what we've been trying to shoot for, for the last few years. Unfortunately, it's not gonna be this coming fiscal year, so.
Did you get the recommendation from the F A C group on our capital requests?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Though we will.
Was that on the latest minutes?
Yes, actually.
Yes, just came out today?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw those.
Okay.
We, we will be meeting with them, it's actually usually one of the last ones I lined up, just to have the tax collector do it and solve it in two shots. So we will be meeting there to get a goal for the capital plan.
We actually will be sending a letter to the Board of Selectmen tomorrow, just once again, they, they asked us if we would, if we would put the capital request through the chair to me, in, in, I guess, a warrant language, so to speak, which we did do. With the understanding, we understand that your legal counsel will may change it or tweak it or whatever, to fit, you know, the warrant, the Berlin warrant. And so we have that, and that will be, that'll be mailed out tomorrow, we'll be sending it to the Board of Selectmen, if you like, I'd be willing, happy to send a copy to you. We're kinda hanging on to one, the number one article, which talks about a sixteen thousand dollar repair to the boiler at Berlin Elementary, which we need to do. What the advisory board to cap?
The FinCom.
The FinCom?
F A C.
F A C. Thank, I like that, F A C. Actually, raised a question about what's causing that type of damage to happen. And actually, here's the water table, and they said, well, gee, could you take a look at water filtration as a possible solution to this, so we don't have to keep spending every five years going in and doing these kinds of extensive repairs?
Chances are, normally, when you treat oral water, it's not by filtration, it's by chemical addition. So you may wanna look at that also.
Uh, we're looking at the whole thing. I mean, actually, we have some big quotes out right now, we're waiting for those, we've been three weeks for this engineering company to get back to us, we're waiting for those quotes to come back to us. And that's why I've been holding off on sending this over to the Board of Selectmen. But we're, we're gonna send this to them tomorrow anyhow, and then if it comes through, we'll send an amendment.
Right.
We'll just send an amendment.
And actually, I was gonna mention tonight that if you're gonna send it tomorrow, and we don't know a number, have a number for that boiler article, we can do it, some to be determined.
Okay. We have a number for what we're proposing now.
Right, right.
But, yeah, we do not have that number there, but that was a suggestion of the F A C, so we can follow up on that.
The rest of them, I think, are pretty.
Yeah, the rest of them.
Accurate.
We'll send a copy of that to you, Scott.
Okay.
Let any of us know if you have any questions that come up, and we'll, we'll tell him to go answer.
Once we know the exact amount you're asking for, then.
Okay. Is there anything else that we can think of, that we can help you with now?
No, I guess the only thing I can think of just offhand, we do have, we can easily get maybe five minutes, is the grievance regarding the co-pay increase. Is there any change in that, or anything you can say, or what?
It's out in cyberspace right now.
Yeah, there really isn't anything new than probably what you've been told. I don't think there's been anything new in a couple of, about a month or two.
At least.
Yeah, so.
We followed it through as far as we can at this point in time, it's, it's all we can say about it right now, it's just, it's there.
Right.
Okay.
We can let you know when we do hear something. All right.
Not sure, we'll find out.
If it involves money, we'll find out.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue with the meeting. I'm gonna leave it left off at communications, in which I don't believe we had any, okay, petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. I'm gonna think of a better way to do it there.
I know, it makes no.
I know, what, does anybody have any, have anything to say out there? Okay. Um, reports, um, the CPAC, is there a CPAC report?
There is.
Okay.
We have our next meeting coming up on Tuesday, twenty-eighth, and we're having our annual justice rights and responsibilities presentation. The new presenter this year, Judy's passed the honors on to Carla Mason, who's a special education coordinator, so she's gonna be doing her very first presentation.
And Mary Wareman, our special educator from Berlin Elementary.
All right. Two presenters. So that's Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at Tohato, seven o'clock, everybody's welcome, and if, you know, you have any questions about special ed, this is a great meeting to start at, really good meeting to come to. And the CPAC scholarship applications are at both Tohato and ACABET, four students to apply for. It's open to any graduating senior from either school who is going to be continuing their education, and who received special education during their elementary, secondary education. So those are available in the guidance offices of both schools.
Just out of curiosity, because we, I know we have to read Tyler on the agenda tonight, is it just for kids at Tohato?
It's ACABET also.
Okay.
Graduating seniors at Tohato or ACABET, um, who are, who will be continuing their education next year, and who, at some point, between kindergarten and twelfth grade, received special education services.
So if a child went to private school? No. Okay, just curious. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We're, we're right on schedule for the superintendent's search. Application deadline was last Friday, we're closed. So far, we've received twenty-three applications for the position, and we have gone through them, and we have pretty much bettered them all out, to make sure that everybody has a complete application package. Anyone that does not, we have made a follow-up phone calls, too, to make sure that, you know, if they're missing something that we've asked for, that they'll send that in to us. I do have a major concern, just about the speed of it, I just see that superintendent's positions are being posted almost every week on the internet. Went to a meeting yesterday, and they're anticipating there'll be at least forty-five openings this year, you know, for, for superintendents in the state, and probably beyond that, just forty-five right now. And as you know, we're, we're in really extreme competition for superintendents that, that would find our districts to be, you know, an interesting district to come to, just because of the size of the district, complexity of the district, and it is at three, it is three, three preschool districts. So I know I spoke to the chair of the region committee, and asked about the possibility of, of maybe having a, a mini committee appointed from the school, school committee members, maybe the three chairs, for example, maybe to come in and, and sit down and go through these paper screening of these applications very, very quickly. I know the intent was at one time, it was to have a, a community search committee come in to do that. My only concern about that is, I think that's gonna take a long time for people to, when you start to add in five, six, seven people going through twenty-three, twenty-three applications, as, time's gonna pass. And we've already lost people, okay, that we've called, and, and I think if we don't move more quickly on it, we'll, that'll, that'll be an issue. I know there was some, some, some chat, and I think some suggestions, and very good suggestions, about having community input into this process, by getting questions from people that indicated that they wanted to be, to be, participate somewhat in the superintendent's search committee, to have them submit, you know, questions, and that maybe, and come to the, maybe a, an interview with the school committee, not, no voting, no voting rights. But come to the school committee to participate in that process, when we get it down to, let's say, five or six people that the committee is really interested in, in looking at. I've gone through the applications, you know, very briefly, of the twenty-three, this is, I'm just seeing it through my eyes only, my perception, I have no friends or relatives that applied, okay, okay. And I, I, I don't wanna say that, I don't, but just looking at it, and I, I think after working here now for five or six months, and knowing both towns before, I think I have a pretty good idea of the skill sets of, of people coming here that I think could do a, a good job for, for Berlin Boyleston and the region. And, you know, I go through all those, and I think you've got about six people, you know, in there that I think that have maybe those kind of skill sets that you, you may wanna look at. I mean, some people obviously don't have the skill set at all. I mean, they might, they might have three years of administration and applying for a superintendency, I mean, they have no other background whatsoever, and they, they're not even certified for the position. I mean, there's a lot of people that apply for different kinds of reasons, even people applying from the private sector that are not licensed for the position. So a lot of those I've kind of put into a, they're really not, not competitive for, for the position, so, and it doesn't mean that, no, I'm the guru of this, but I think just by years of experience, pretty much size up who would be a really good bona fide candidate for you. So, so my, my impression at this point in time is to move that forward as soon as possible, to get that core group of people that you're really interested in taking a good, hard look at for interviews, and then bringing the community in for input into the whole interview process, and, and expedite this and move the surrounding. I, I know I'm, I, I, this is insane, I'm just trying to put myself out of, out of work, but, but I really, that's really, really what it's about. I'm gonna get someone here that's gonna be here for a significantly long period of time, and to understand the culture and the history of the district, and we work with, with the committees to do really good work on behalf of the students in Berlin Boyleston. But so far, we're, we're right where we wanna be, we are in the midst of the, of the competition, we were, we were out ahead of the curve, and I want us to stay out on the head of that curve.
How, how many people have we had interested in being on the screening committee?
Well, it hasn't, you know, we haven't had an avalanche of people, but.
No?
Six. Six people, you know, maybe seven, someone else mentioned something to me today, but it was after the deadline, but about six people.
Okay. Right, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, so that's, it's working well. The two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year calendar, we're not asking you to vote on anything tonight, just to let the committee know that we have gotten some phone calls from parents, not an avalanche of phone calls, but a few calls of interest, saying, gee, have you set the calendar for next year, because we're trying to set up our family, you know, family vacation, or go visit, a visit at the end, or whatever it is, anyhow, with that, I mean, we kinda like wanna know what's, uh, have, have any thoughts been given to that for next year? So, uh, the, I'm sorry. Uh, anyhow, the, so the school calendar, what we have done, though, is the administrators did meet, and we, in the setting up the calendar we have so far, we are very interested in getting those common in-service dates together, so that the Boyleston teachers, the Berlin teachers, the Tohato teachers, and also through the collaborative, other collaborative public school districts around us that we interface with and are part of our region, that we can have some common in-service days, okay, for every, for everyone to come in on. And that's, I think, the, the real thrust of the calendar at, at this point in time, particularly the, the first three days, the beginning of the school year, the November sixth is the collaborative in-service date, am I correct on that, Judy? Okay, and, and not only that, we can send people to those workshops, too, and people from there can come to us. So we get a, a big bang for our buck in terms of the in-service. So that's, that's what we're trying to orchestrate, and that's as far as we've gone right now, and nothing else is, is in concrete. We've done, the last day of school, you, you'll see in this calendar, there's no snowmen, or snowballs on this calendar. I think that it confuses people, it confuses a lot of people, we got a lot of phone calls on that. So what we just put down right now is, with an asterisk, what we anticipate being the last day of school, subject to, of course, snow days. So after that, we just add, and I think it's very clear to everybody then, you know, to meet the threshold of, of state mandates, in terms of the amount of days you have to go to school.
It's not mandated that we do that, is it? Or is it that you put in, you know, like, mark five days?
No, you, you don't have, you don't have to run it that way. No, you can run it this way, here, just add the days in as you.
We're not gonna get teaching grievances and that kind of thing if we don't put them on the calendar?
You have to go one hundred and eighty days.
Right, but we have a couple of more days, don't we, in some of the calendars?
One eighty-five for, for staff. 185 for, for staff, 180 for, for students. But we haven't got to that stage yet with professional development and planning, like, within the Berlin calendar. Well, these are just suggested days, we haven't come up with those yet. I mean, once again, we wanted to plan for those three, three big days at the beginning of the school year, then that, then that November 6th day is the one that we're looking at right now.
Okay.
And the state statute isn't just as in amount of days too. It's hours, as you know, it's hours too.
Right. Are all, are all of the schools at 180?
In the Commonwealth?
Student days?
Oh, yes. So that's, that's state, that's state law.
No, no, I mean, are we at 180 student days in Berlin, Boilson, and the region? Or are we at 881 or 82?
Varies, varies by contract, from district to district.
Right. That's what I thought.
Yeah. Some are 180, some are 181, some are 182.
Right.
You know, it, yeah. Some of them have some unique language in the contracts too. They talk about the student days, and they talk about four more days to be...
Right.
Assigned, you know? And different, different school committees have some different thoughts on this. One school committee is interested in not having a lot of half-days and just combine them into one day, 'cause their constituents are saying childcare's getting to be a problem, and they like just want those whole days for conferences versus having two and a half days.
I disagree with that.
I mean, it, it... Communities, you know, communities are different. Constituencies are different.
Okay. So you'll bring us... You'll bring, you'll bring whatever information, more information back at the next meeting?
Oh, we'd like to bring to you, the next calendar, we'd like to bring to you is a calendar for you to vote on.
Okay. Do we...
To approve.
Do we... Are you going to ask the teachers, the teachers' parents and whatnot on this calendar?
Yeah, send out to the PTO. We've already sent to the teachers.
We did send to the services.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we haven't, we certainly will.
Okay.
The contract says that we...
Get to the next meeting and...
They had no decision-making in it, but they, but they, we, they, we need to... We want to split the report anyhow, but...
Right.
But...
Never know, it helps sometimes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. What's it, Claire Brule?
Have we considered, when you get parental feedback, people that have children in Berlin Memorial and Tohoto, we are anticipating, I believe, an extended possible winter break to move into the building?
We haven't put that, none of that's been put onto the calendar. We're looking to, I think there's been very little or no discussion on that. I think the assumption is, from what I'm hearing, my perception, is that over that Christmas break, that's when that move will be done.
And we think we can do it within the timeframe that we usually have off? I guess without a discussion...
Yes, it was an issue.
I don't have a crystal ball, but...
Well, I know.
If, if you're going in to refurbish the building ahead of time with what you're purchasing, for your furnishings and your lab equipment and athletic equipment, and the building's all gonna be furnished, the amount of material that's, that's gonna go from the, the current high school now over there, we assume would be, would be minimal, okay? Wouldn't be tons of things going over there. You know, obviously, the library will move. That'd probably be a real big move. But in terms of the athletic equipment, not that, I mean, not that much is gonna, you can't take the backboards down and bring them over there and the gym floors, the gym floor...
So you were just anticipating that we will be able to do it within that...
That's what I've been hearing right, right now. I haven't heard anything different, you know, from anyone.
Just as a...
But no one's, but no one's raised a question. So I think it's a great question to raise, but no one's, no one's asked it.
Should we be asking the building committee? Because I guess what I'm saying is that it may affect Berlin Memorial. If I had a child in one of each, and if I'm gonna have the opportunity to have an extended vacation beyond what everybody else in the world might have, I might plan my vacation differently. But if we're not, you know, I guess we need the feedback from, if, I guess, first we need to find out if we are. And then, if we are, do we wanna have totally different calendars for Tohoto and the elementary schools? And if we don't, then look out July 1st. But I guess that's the other feedback I just think we should be looking at.
And just thinking about back when we moved to Berlin Memorial.
It was wintertime, right? It was January, right?
We did voluntarily, too. We did volunteer.
Yes.
Did we get it done?
Coordinator.
Yes, this is our...
Was it a volunteer?
She was our move coordinator, actually, if you...
I know, but are you volunteering?
Unless you wanna help me move out of my house.
But there were, there were some contractual issues that you might wanna just be aware of, that we need to, so we don't go through that again. If, if we anticipate needing more days. You remember that?
No, I don't.
I believe you... Before your time.
I think it was. I think it was.
Yes.
So I guess that would just one thing I would suggest we...
I think it's a great, I think it's a, it's a great question that we raised, really. I didn't think of it quite, you know, I just assumed that was gonna happen.
It'd be great if we could do it during that week. I'm hoping that that's, that would work.
All right, but what kind of volunteers are you gonna get? No, I'm just saying, you know, it's a holiday break for a lot of people. They're celebrating, they're doing things.
I think, I think we'd be talking about a professional company coming in and moving everything over. Volunteers, a lot of liability, yeah. You know, it's one thing to, you know, it's, they go over there, slip on a piece of ice, they're carrying a chair, they fall down, they get hurt. I mean...
Well, then we may, we may be wanting to see if we can secure moving people during that week. Sooner than later.
Oh, I think it's a good point.
It's a busy time of the year. My kids are talking about it, that's why I remembered.
So the calendar will be on the agenda, I would assume, for next month?
Yes.
And Courtney, do you have any report for us this evening?
Oh, yes, I do. Could you have in your packet the general fund budget report? And I also have this evening on the school lunch program, historical trend and projections report. So we'll start with the general fund budget. And again, this has line by line, you know, the budget, budget adjustments, adjusted budget expenditures to date, the encumbrances, the budget balance as it is now, and then I have a projection through June 30th. Now, I guess I wanna, I wanna say that partially my being new and not have familiarity with the, you know, the nuances of the various budgets, as you notice, I did put, you know, that we are expecting to expend, you know, the budget through the end of the year. You know, as you get more familiar with budgets, you kinda know the little ins and outs, 'cause lines can be different, things are going on. So I guess the way I would put it is, I have no reason to say that we won't at this point, so, you know? But it's, it's right on target, no problems at all, and we don't foresee any issues. Oh, yes. And I do want to, if you'll please turn to the last page. And I do want to, I had to kinda make a little change in, in presentation on, actually, all of them. So what I've done is, the, all of the budget down to the bold numbers on that last page is just the general fund budget as voted by, you know, annual town meeting, which is really the way, you always wanna keep that separate. And then what I have underneath is what you voted to, for, with regard to, as far as the overall spending plan, take from School Choice Revolving Fund and Circuit Breaker. And I've already applied those, and I have it in parentheses, the areas where those were applied, okay? So I've removed them from, you know, 'cause they were kind of mixed in with the general fund before. So I've separated that out. And to kinda make it kind of a little bit clearer, I hope, I put a little synopsis down at the bottom, total spending plan budget, you know, as you voted on it last year, as it was planned and discussed by the school committee, the voted general fund budget, that's the amount voted by annual town meeting. And then I have the School Choice Revolving, and then the Circuit Breaker, and the total, you know, let's call it, school spending plan, okay? I didn't know if you have any questions regarding that, but this keeps it nice and clean as far as the general fund annual town meeting appropriation, and it kinda breaks out how we're utilizing the, the revolving funds and what, and I've already applied those. So those are all, all set and applied. But there aren't any, any issues I can foresee with regard to the, the general fund budget. But I didn't know if you had any, any questions at this time? Luckily, it's looking very good thus far. That's always a good thing. Okay, so we'll move on to the school lunch program, historical trend and projections report. So what I did, and again, my being new, this was a really good exercise, because it, you know, doing this actually makes me more familiar with what's gone on in the past so that I can, you know, going forward, you, you, you know, you can't go forward unless you know what's gone on in the past, that's for sure. So I have actuals for you for 2008, 9, 10, and 11. And I have FY 12 projections. I worked that out with, meeting with Mary Ellen, the food service director, and looking at, at some trends too. The FY 13, I mean, that's very preliminary. It's really, really kind of, kind of early for that, and, and a number, you know, there are some things that we need to find out before we, but I did add that column, though. Couple of things I wanna bring to your attention. I am showing you the beginning fund balance, the revenues that were brought in by various categories, and expenditures. And by the way, I'm also changing our chart of accounts on the general ledger to include actually more, I'm gonna be breaking out federal and state reimbursement. I'm gonna break out, 'cause it should be broken out, student fees should always be broken out and be separate from adult fees, and interest, income, and miscellaneous. And on the expenditure end, I'm actually adding some more categories to, especially with the food service program. It's such a fine, it's such a tight program to run and keep financial, so financially in the black and sustainable, that obviously the more detailed information you have to break out into categories, the, the better it is to make decisions, to see where the money's going, and things of that nature, especially with regard to a trend. So I'll be doing that. Actually, we're breaking it out this year, and then it'll go forward into future years. And so I show you another row that shows your revenue over expenditures, which is very telling. Reason being is certainly, for sustainability purposes, the idea is to have your revenues each fiscal year cover your expenditures for that fiscal year. And usually with the food service program, first of all, under the regulations, you're only allowed to keep three months' worth of expenditures in a fund balance. In other words, the federal government does not allow you to, you know, kinda create a war chest. You can't keep building up a fund balance, it's just not allowed. They'll actually take the money from you for monies that they have given to you for federal and state reimbursement. But that being said, certainly is very good to have a fund balance for obvious reasons, but more so because it's such a difficult program with regard to sustainability that you want to have those funds available for equipment especially. If you have something break down, refrigerator, freezer, repairs that are more extraordinary than what you may be able to accommodate in your yearly budget, maybe a new program like NutraKids, which is your POS system, and the software and hardware associated with it, things of that nature. So that's why I show you the revenue over expenditures row, which is very telling. And then I show you the ending fund balance, and that has fluctuated. But I do wanna bring to your attention, though, that, as you can see towards the bottom there, I also show you the years in which the general fund has contributed, for lack of a, a better way of putting it, to the food service program. And I give you the dollar amounts and what those, that was spent on. Food is an easy category, 'cause personnel can get kinda messy, but and certainly in this fiscal year, we do have in your general fund budget, and you'll see it in the report here, $15,000 was voted in a line item to be utilized in FY 12 also. Down at the bottom, I also have some enrollment figures for you, that's student enrollment, the average student participation, and the average participation rate. And you can see some fluctuation there. It's fairly stable, except for the year FY 2011. And I got the figures on student participation from the food service director from reports that she has to submit to the state too, so... Let's see. And I also have at the bottom too, just the numbers of students we have on free lunch reduced and the overall percentage of that, very, very, very low. So you're not getting a lot of income, obviously, from the federal and state government for that. So all that being said, I did meet with Mary Ellen, and we had quite a discussion regarding the food service program, you know, in general. And she and I will be meeting with Carol to go over, you know, the particulars here at Berlin Memorial. Certainly, there are three main categories that you need to look at with regard to trying to create and maintain a sustainable program. And those certainly would be the revenues. And I'm gathering some information on the fees, student and adult fees. It's my understanding they haven't been increased for years. And you just can't keep a, you know, I hate to say it, but you really can't keep a school lunch program.
The cost of lunch?
Yes. You really cannot keep a, a program sustainable with not increasing fees. I know people don't like the idea of increasing fees, but when you think about it, it'd be very difficult to get a lunch that cheaply, you know, if you went out or even if you bought the food in a, in a grocery store and brought it home and cooked it, you know? So there's that aspect of it on the revenue side. Certainly, federal and state reimbursement is not going to increase. You have such tiny numbers with regard to free and reduce, so that's not even an area to be looking at. Obviously, we need to look on the expenditure side. We are making use of commodities, and certainly we can look more into procurement, see if there's something we can do there with regard to procurement issues that may bring in some lower food costs. That's a possibility. Although, that being said, I just wanted to tell you that last year, and again this year, there's more coming out. There have been numerous regulations passed by the federal government with regard to the type of food that you can serve. They feel on the federal level that the country has an obesity problem, that they, they feel that can be addressed to somewhat of an extent through a food service program. Obviously, a food service program affects millions of, of children throughout the United States. So some of those foods become more costly. They do dictate exactly what you can serve, how much, you know, and what combinations, ingredients, and, and things of that nature. So I just wanted to, to remind you about the compliance end. But that being said, there is some flexibility. Certainly, you can do some things with your menu, make things more exciting. Mary Ellen has recently, she attended a training where they came out with some new recipes. She's talking about different kinds of salads, not a salad bar, because that can be very wasteful, but maybe preparing some individual different types of salads that can be more enticing, homemade soups, making her own sauce.
Samples.
Samples, things of that nature.
Can I ask a quick question? How much are the students currently paying for lunch?
$2.25.
$2.25.
Yep. And that's, that's fairly low, you know?
Is it different, is it different than the high school?
Um, yes, the high school is usually higher. To be honest, but you can't remember all the... Yeah.
One more thing we have talked about in the past, though, is that you, you do take the chance, if you raise it, and we haven't raised it for a while, but last time we did, I think you take the chance that there will be less participation.
That usually happens initially.
Yes.
Yeah, initially.
So it's like a...
Right. And he's correct about that. Yep.
You know, it's a fine line.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
But then, but then if you don't, though, you already know that you're not keeping pace, and you're going in the hole.
Right.
So you're kind of, are kinda forced to do it. And I believe Dr. DeBruel is correct, from what I've also seen, I think we've both seen the same thing. Initially, that may be the case, is kind of, it's kind of human nature, you know? Oh, yeah, I'm gonna push back on that, I'm not gonna do that. But you know what? Sometimes, you know, and maybe they might wanna make a sandwich and make their lunch every day for a week or so, but for years, you know, I don't know if, if, you know? So, yes, initially, you'll see some pushback, and after a while, they say, you know, it's really only 25 cents, you know, but I'm spending all my time getting this extra food. I'm making the food, I'm having to pack the lunch, and I'm trying to rush off to work in the morning. So, and the other thing that we need to work on, the third component, is, is, to your point, student participation. And you can do that, and there are a number of different things we can do. And as I said, you know, I apologize, Carol, I have not had a chance to meet with Carol yet. But Mary Ellen and I will be sitting down and meeting with Carol. Obviously, it's her, she's the principal of the school, to go over any, any thoughts that she may have on it and have all of us get together and discuss some ideas that Mary Ellen has and see what we can do to increase participation. Another area that we are gonna be looking at is, and the state actually has, for lack of a better way, formula to assess whether or not, given the number of students and the size of your program, whether or not the personnel that you have, the number of man-hours, so to speak, is in, you know, with, with the practices, the general practices for food service programs. It's just another area, just to look at, to say, yes, we've looked at it, it is in line with what it does take to run a program, you know, in a school this size, that we're not overstaffed either. Staffing and food are the two largest expenditure components of a food service program, so...
How many, how many staff members do we have in the cafeteria right now at Berlin Memorial?
Oh, my God, I forgot to add my, you know what? I had on my, I must have, you know, hidden those, those rows. I actually had all the staffing here, and I'm sorry, I can't remember all three, so...
We have three, but one is very much...
A few hours.
Yeah, just a couple hours a day. What's what I figured? Dishwashing. So... The one that's... So we have like two and a half.
And she's not even full-time. I forget what it was. I can't remember, .5, .6, you know?
Right.
But I had them all broken out on my, the bottom here, but I must have hidden that to make room for the rest of it. But so we'll be looking at that, definitely needs to be looked at going forward. Ideally, certainly, you ideally would not want to have to fund it, you know, from the general fund.
Right. Right, I don't think, it's been a very long time, I think since we have not. I vote for the baked potato again.
Nobody likes my suggestions.
Baked potato.
Pizza Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, nachos on Tuesday and Thursday.
Uh, no, that would not be compliant with the regulations.
Probably wouldn't be compliant, but I'll tell you, the participation would be.
True.
I scream on Friday afternoon.
And inviting, I think they did invite people in, parents and the kids, that's a program that worked well at one point. I don't know if it would again.
We may try the same.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a number of things that we're thinking about, that, yeah.
Are the kids gonna actually try it?
Yeah, keep us posted.
They see.
So we will. So I might be bringing after I meet with Carol. And, you know, we have some discussions, I might, what I, what I probably am going to do, you know, probably across the board, is bring forward some recommendations.
Good.
With regard to, you know, in increased in school lunch, because that'll be one component. We really kind of can't, you know, because it has been a number of years too, so. Does anyone have any other questions on? Okay, so it's a learning process for me too, going through this, it's very good, the history of it.
Okay. And wanna talk about the FY thirteen budget at all?
That was really a placeholder I had put on there, Matt Scheperson, because I didn't know about what our conversation might be with the, with the FinCom tonight, and just about budgets. So I just put that on there. But, but I think that, you know, you have the budget. And in the budget, you have some information also from us on if we have to reduce the budget, some areas that you may want to look at to reduce the budget in those areas to bring it down to various percentages that we've outlined for you. And so I think once maybe we get the Hato assessment worked out, the project of the Hato assessments, then, then at that point in time, it's just, I would just encourage the committee to look at the budget again, look at some of those percentages that are in there, and look at some of those reductions, and look at other things that are in the budget that you may want to consider, or if there's other directions you want to give to, to us. I will be meeting with Carol and Judy to talk about the Berlin budget again next week, because I wanted to wait till I heard from the FinCom tonight. I don't want to do a lot of work for nothing, because I can't wait. And just to sit down and chat about some other things that we can share with you. But, and then a point in time is, I mean, obviously you'll have to make a decision as to whether is the budget you currently have now, the budget you're going to, that you voted, is the budget we're gonna present to the FinCom, and that's the budget, okay? Or is there another budget that you wish to vote and present to the FinCom before, you know, the town warrant is sent? So I may, I put that, I wanted it on there just in case, I haven't worked with them before, so I know.
Is there any, anything else to be said by the school committee, do you have any?
Do you have a recommendation to share with Mike or?
We did have a letter at one point of a retirement, but I don't, was that at the end of two thousand and thirteen?
Yeah.
School year?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We don't know of any others right now anyway.
We have to receive anything at the central office.
Yeah, I've been asking. Always looking for those vacancy savings.
Right, right.
But, no.
Okay, sounds good. Principals report.
Sure. So the first thing we have on the agenda tonight is the electronic devices in school. And I want to give you a little history on that and to ask a special request of the school committee this evening. I've invited Patricia Anderson here, who's our librarian and our tenth specialist. Every, she's the person who's really the one who does a tremendous amount of work with technology and students in our school. She teaches them all about getting online research, PowerPoint presentations, podcasts, and name it. She's got them really cooking and up to date on what they need to know, really, for, for education, educational purposes, using technology for now and unless it's gonna help them in the future. So I'm gonna give Patricia a moment to talk, in just a moment, to share a little bit about your thoughts with this. Last month, I, I might have mentioned this in school committee, I had approached the school council first with a conversation about using electronic devices in the school. And by that I mean Kindles, Nooks, any kind of e-readers, iPads. And it started because a student, a parent asked me, a student wanted to bring in his Kindle to read his books. They're loaded onto the Kindle, and that's how he reads at home, he reads on the bus, he reads in the car, every place. So that started the conversation. And largely, I approached the school council first because it's part of our school improvement plan, that we're really trying to increase technology access for the children, familiarity with all of these tools. So they were very supportive of going out to some of the other groups that we have and seeking opinions on this and bringing it back to them. And then we would work on a plan around this, to set up perhaps a trial period to see how this would work, to bring these devices into the school. But, and to do it in a way that is gradual and also a way that we can get information back on some of the issues we might face when we're doing this and how we can better implement it in the schools and have parameters around it. So I did do that after I talked to the school council, I went to Link, and we even have, Irina Derohy's here. She's part of our Link, she's our vice president, and we got into a huge discussion that night with a number of the parents. And it was very interesting to hear their perspective. It's kind of all over the place, really. Mostly what I heard from them and from school council, and then later on from the staff, is if we're going to do this, there has to be parameters around it, and we have to emphasize it's for educational purposes and our recreational purposes. And then there's a safety factor too, around what children are able to access while they're at school, and safety as far as protecting this equipment. I mean, because we don't have lockers, so we have to think about where children are gonna be keeping this, their iPads or their whatever, it's their Kindles while they're at school. So there's a lot of pieces to this. I brought back all of the information yesterday, as a matter of fact, we had a school council meeting. And we decided that I would draw up a letter to parents of fifth and sixth graders. And we have a number of people that have eyes on it, I'm giving it to school council, the teachers, I met with them today, and Patricia, to look at this letter. And it explains that we would like to have a trial period between February and April, where we have fifth and sixth graders giving them permission to bring these devices in. I set the parameters around that, as far as what these are used for. I put in there that it's simply educational purposes, that the parents are responsible for being aware that the children are bringing these, this equipment in, they have to sign off on a letter or check that they know that this is gonna be coming in. If we don't have that from the parents and a child brings in something, we will contact the parents and have them come and get that. So we want them to know, or we want to know from them that it's okay, that they're not just bringing them in from home without parents being aware. So I put the letter together, I don't have a copy of it, I just did that today, but my question for the committee tonight, we have in our school handbook on page twenty-three, and I think everyone has a copy in their packet.
They should.
There's, there's, under, under the school rules, and this has been there much longer than I've been here, but we really haven't changed it. It says that at all times, students will not possess distracting or potentially harmful objects. This is forbidden. These include but are not limited to electronic devices. Weapons and or toy weapons, toys, iPods, cell phones, and other similar devices are not allowed. So we're really trying to flush out technology as being distracting and or dangerous. There's certainly potential for that, as we know, but we're trying to look at this in a very positive way. And in order to do this trial period that we're looking at, where we can gather information about how, how this works with the children, with the possibility of moving it to fourth grade for the end of the year, adding on the fourth grade, and then implementing it next year, and putting that in our handbook, and attaching it to our user policy as well, which protects, which is really having families sign off on understanding the user policy for technology. So I would need to get, I guess, a waiver or permission to do this. But before you, I wanted to just have Patricia, if you want, do you want to add anything to?
I think it's a great idea to actually allow them to bring things in. I think kids, at this point, they, the only thing that they really could do would to be read something that would be on their Kindles or on their iPads. They would be able to get into the internet or, you know, do anything like that, be able to do searches or anything. And then, at this point, I think these things are so motivational for reading. And the special education department has a lot of iPads that have been great for a lot of the kids. So I think, I think it can only be a positive step for kids if they really are doing that reading and if other kids see them doing that reading, and I think it's motivational, I think it's just, it's, it's here. Something that's, you know, I think we do have to embrace positively and not be afraid of it. And definitely protecting the device itself, and protecting the school and people responsible for them, to be responsible for them. I don't think, I think you should be careful, like, the schools and the teachers are not responsible for loss or leakage or anything like that. But other than that, I think it's just a positive step, really.
I heard Dr. DeBruel ask, ask a question about why they can't access.
Well, I would assume if they, if you allow cell phones into the buildings, depending upon the sophistication of the cell phones, they should be able to access the internet.
We only have, like, I think, two wireless hubs in our school right now. So if they do have that kind of technology on their cell phones, I guess they can do it through their phone usage.
Through the phone, sure.
But I would think that might be something that you'd have to tell the parents, you'd have to turn that off.
But we're not talking about cell phones here, right? We're talking about learning devices, that would be.
Mostly.
Right, some cell phones are learning devices, so, I mean, some of them have a.
Oh, they are, they are.
To be, so we would definitely have to take that into consideration of what we allow in the school and how that's used and when it's used. I know I spoke with Diane Tussaria at Tonto, the children do have the ability to bring all of this equipment in. If they see it out though, at inappropriate times.
Confiscated at the end of the day, yep.
Yeah, they will confiscate it, so.
What grade levels are you talking about, Mrs. Brad?
Right now, I'm looking at just fifth and sixth grade for a trial between February and April, and then going back and revisiting that, and.
I agree, I mean, some of this, as we saw in the workshop, the bullying workshop, and the third grade was at twenty-eight percent of all third graders have cell phones.
Yeah.
On all the messages that's right now.
They have.
But there's lots of different sophistication levels on, on cell phones, yeah.
And I think too, that one of the, possibly one of the issues around this is that we're not catching students young enough to give them the kind of training and around what's appropriate and what, what isn't appropriate. Because we're not even allowing them to come into the schools, we're not addressing it as if they are dangerous.
So your attitude is coming across as negative and that it's a bad thing, right?
And it can be used, and it's, and it's connected to using it in a bad way, rather than all the positive things, certainly that Patricia does every day with the kids in school. So trying to look at it, you know, in a positive way, certainly it is positive. And, and also because it connects to our school improvement plan and what we're part of, what we're trying to do, which is prepare our children for their future, really. Because I don't know how to turn on a Kindle, so. I tried, I forget, so.
Was there any?
You can. I was having fun, I buy the book.
Was there any concern by anybody that you talked to at school council or Link or anything about the cost of some of these items? And, and the loss, or I know Diane Tussaria said that, you know, cell phones get stolen, and is there any concern like that?
I, I think it's, I think there's concern about that, certainly been a question that was raised. It was interesting, it was raised in a couple of ways. One, in terms of it getting stolen and whether or not we would be liable for replacing that. And we, we don't feel that we are, I mean, if a parent allows us to come in, then it, then it's not our responsibility to reimburse them if it, if it's lost or stolen or broken or any of those things. But that would have to be a clear understanding.
I think that would have to be part of the change that you're asking for in the language.
In the handbook, yeah. It will, it will, certainly, and I.
I would think, yes, that's the one major thing that you would have to say, the school and school committee and parents, I mean, all the teachers are not liable for any loss or broken devices if they bring them in.
And I.
Go ahead. I was thinking in the letter that you sent home that they're signing off on, perhaps you should add a waiver so that they agree, and it's right up front that the school is not responsible for loss or broken. Yeah, I, I didn't actually mention it in the letter, I, I just on the letter, so that's why I didn't include it in the packet for tonight. And I, I want to try to send it out right before we leave for vacation. So I can do it, certainly emphasize that with, make a waiver for them.
I'd probably phrase the language that, just to remind them that we are not liable for it. It's a little bit different twist. We're not liable if lunch boxes get stolen. We're not liable if a kid's scarf gets taken. We are not liable for sneakers missing out of lockers. We are not liable for any of that, okay? And we are not liable for cell phones that are taken or Kindles. And that we may want to remind them of the fact that the school is not liable for that.
And differences though, some of the iPads are four hundred dollars.
I certainly understand that.
I know, so I mean, I, I mean, I hesitate to let my child even bring something that expensive to school.
And that was, that was certainly a conversation that came up at our Link meeting quite a bit, because I found, found the parents of the younger children were saying we wouldn't even let them bring it in. So it wouldn't be an issue to us. Although certainly we have a number of children that do have this equipment at home and use it very well, you know, so. And the other, the other piece that came up too, was an interesting question about the equity of it all. Some kids had these and some didn't have them.
That's my next question.
And a parent, or my school council made a really valid point that, you know, some kids have boots and some don't. Some kids have some other kind of, you know, whatever it is, a certain kind of jewelry or a certain type of sneaker or whatever, and some kids don't have it. It's, it's part of all of that as well, we don't control that, so this is just. Again, because this is so new to all of us in so many districts, I mean, I think we're all as districts, school districts, dealing with this, we're trying to get our heads around embracing this as just something that's very commonplace for us.
And then, speaking in that vein, so a teacher wouldn't plan a lesson based on the kids with iPads, just to clarify that.
Right.
It would be based on, you can do it this way, you can do it that way, we can, so there wouldn't be that exclusivity.
Absolutely not, there, I mean, there would not be that exclusivity. Patricia does a lot of work and with the children, preparing with research projects that they're able to do in the, in the library with all the computers in there. But if children are often offered opportunities to present in different ways in their classrooms as well as in the, in the library, they could work on a project at home and bring it in through their iPad, and you, and you do the project there rather than having to wait to come to school every time to do that project, because it takes children, different children, different amounts of time to do it. And some want to utilize that as a tool for their presentation, and some don't.
So is that, I guess, what are the venues that you would utilize? Or is it just alone reading time, or?
It's in the classrooms or anywhere?
When, just bringing, why do they?
We have such a small population anyway, so I, at this point, I don't think that the teachers are gonna be using them as an assignment at all. It could just be, you know, start time, there's silent reading time, recreation time. I mean, you could also remind them that public libraries actually do offer some of them too, and they can, you know, I can let them know that if other kids can't financially get them, they actually can go to public libraries to get them, so.
Do you have an idea, like, out of the fifth and sixth grade, how many kids we might be talking about that would participate?
No, we don't.
You don't know? One or two?
We know, we have a lot.
I wouldn't you put it out there.
Yes, yeah, I mean, one or two have asked, certainly the one, and then there was one other child.
As a second grader that asked.
And a second grader, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. But we, we did agree with, yesterday with the school council, that we did not want them used outside during recess time, because then that would take away from children running around and playing and being active. And, and that defeats the purpose of that recess and getting what they need for physical activity. So we would not have it there, and also on the bus would be another place, so we do not want them coming in.
So are you going to propose language of some sort, or?
Well, I, I think first of all, when the, when the school committee has to approve this concept, number one. Then two, if you approve the concept, then you'll either have to waive your policy for a, suspend it for a temporary period of time, let's say from now until June of this year, and then revisit it again to see how this, is a pilot project?
Yes, I'd want to come back to you in April, right.
So to approve the pilot project and to waive, you know, under school rules, bullet number five, that the ability for students indeed to take in iPads, iPods, Kindles, Nooks, whatever. Oh no, whatever. Looks, look, I gotta write the cost of the race. More like the twenty-fourth century, you know, in.
He plays a good game.
For educational purposes.
Maybe I'll go with, like, you, and then you can work with the students, they can show you the Kindle.
I got my two-and-a-half-year-old grand son to show us.
There you go, so.
Okay, let me show you how to use that. It'll take a tool on. Give it to me.
Well, I have one more question, this is the current language?
That's the current language.
So how do you know, how do you know how many kids have cellphones, if they're not supposed to bring them in?
That's.
We don't, we would have to go through their heads.
And you do know that some are.
Some have them with them at school?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know that, I just know that they do have them, just personally, I know that the kids have them.
I think it was a pilot program, you know, while the administration's stuff discrepancy there and how to, you know.
And I think, you know, some kids are probably going different places after school, parents, you know, fifth grader, they have their phone in their backpack, and really, as a parent, I wouldn't find that to be.
No, no.
An issue.
We did have one parental in our first grade. I'm just telling.
You let them get it, no.
Took the teacher a little while to get her head around the fact that it was actually some student's cellphone calling off, yeah.
Well, what is the committee?
Who's calling the first grader? Who's calling the first grader?
I know, really.
The parents? And they should know where this first grader is.
Who are you?
Maybe it was the wrong them.
So, I guess, what's the committee's pleasure?
I think it's, I think it's a really good idea, I don't think, we obviously don't have the funds to sit here and provide every child with the technology, but wouldn't it be great if they could utilize that in their education? I like the fact that we're doing a test program, let's see how it works, let's see what the flaws are and figure it out, and then we could come up with a really good policy after that, that's my opinion.
Do you think to add a group?
No, I'm comfortable with it, you know, the test, I'll be curious, I'll be curious to see if others decide that that's going to be on the Christmas list or whatever, but I'm willing to.
Fifty-nine percent of children in the fifth and sixth grade will be, have that on their Christmas list next year.
And if they're all reading, we've done a good job.
Yeah, well, I think, aren't Nooks and Kindles a little more affordable?
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking sixty-nine, seventy-nine, eight hundred percent.
Eight dollars, you get a pretty good Kindle.
Right.
So the committee would have to make a motion to vote to allow Ms. Bradley to begin this pilot program.
Effective.
Effective date.
Yep, I do, it's February twenty, Monday, February twenty-seventh.
To the end of the school year, with the report coming up from the end of the school year.
Can we, I'd be, feel more comfortable if we had something in the motion saying we'll relook at this in June.
I set the date for Monday, April twenty-third as the trial period, after we come back from our April break, so perhaps if we looked, at that point, I'd want to take it back to school council for review, and also my other groups, and certainly Patricia will be involved with me along the way on this, and then we'll come back to you in May with the results of this, so that we can consider changing it, because by June, I'll have the handbook, need to bring the handbook to you.
You could make the motion to allow the pilot program beginning on such a date, ending on such a date with the report being issued by the building principal, and then after that, you could see what happens, which one to.
Okay, does anyone care to make the motion?
I don't hear this, but.
Oh, okay.
Motion to allow Carol Bradley to begin the pilot program on February twenty-seventh until Monday, April twenty-third, with a report issued by the building principal.
They want a second motion? Or make that motion?
In May.
In May, okay.
So she was trying to.
Good job, Nikki, second.
Okay, is there anything else to be said? Okay, we'll take a vote, then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Need the motion out to waive your policy for that time period, so the motion would be to waive policy under page twenty-three, the code of conduct discipline, subcategory school rules, bullet number five, to allow the use of.
Electronic devices.
Only electronic devices.
Electronic devices for educational purposes.
So moved. Second. Good job, Bert.
Yeah.
Goodness. I mean, I'll give you a second, go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, anything else to be said? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, both motions passed.
The last thing I wanted to mention tonight is that tomorrow evening at six-thirty, we have the kindergarten information all night, so if you're a parent of a kindergartner or upcoming kindergartner, come on out and visit us and hear about our program, which is a free full-day program, and we've done a lot of inquiries already from our residents and also from folks in the surrounding towns who we expect to see tomorrow evening, and you're invited to come, too.
You can.
You, you're busy.
School building committee.
Oh, okay, I was going to go look at my calendar after this.
Just wanted to remind you right.
Get it on.
Okay, oh, yeah, I do, I'm sorry, I almost missed, we do have PBIS on the account, on the agenda, and just to note that in March, I will be going to Buss to speak on PBIS and what it's about as a social curriculum, and also I've invited Martha Wally, who was our regional trainer, to come with me for that evening, so she'll be sharing information about that, I did want to make mention, in case you saw this in one of our local papers, it was, there was a caption that described PBIS as an alternative program for students with behavioral issues, that is in fact not at all what the program is about, and it was totally misinterpreted, so if you did read that, I was concerned that parents would see that.
Where did you see this?
In a local paper.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it was, so I would encourage folks to come out and hear about it, we're still, we continue to do our work on that, the teachers on the committee are preparing metrics on behavior, expected behaviors in the hallways, and working on incentives for the children as well, so we're moving along with it.
Sorry, where did you see that was?
The bus meeting.
The date, I wrote it down.
The thirteenth, I believe, isn't it?
It's been a couple, I have March fifth.
I don't think there was one in February this month, was there?
Gosh, I, I don't, I didn't see anything about it for February, but I have March, I do have March fifth.
So it was supposed to have been.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was changed.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add that today I sat and accepted applications for the preschools, and you got some cute little kids coming up.
They're always cute, and they come down the hall, and you have to look over the desk to see them.
Just need more of them.
Well, I'm sitting there tomorrow, too, so. Okay, thanks, Carol, business items, we took care of the execution of the two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen contract, articles for annual town meeting warrants.
You've already voted that, that was a placeholder, in case we receive the quote, the quote on the boiler repair, if we did not receive it, I will send this out tomorrow to the board, Slakman, obviously, Scott, copy to Scott, what's his last name?
Schultz.
Okay.
S-C-H-U-L-T-Z, I think.
And I will send a copy to him, and then as he recommended, should we get that bid quote in, we'll afford that on to the committee first for a vote, then on to the income or the FAC or both, or whomever you want me to send it to, I will send it to at that point in time, so that's just, that's a placeholder for this evening, tonight now, and I'll let, you can speak this a little bit, but basically, we need to audit, student activity fund audit, I mean, that's required by law, it's approximately about a thousand dollars for the audit, and we think we can pay for almost, almost all of it from the interest on that particular account, there's something, has not been done in the past, my understanding, it should be done, you know, by state regulation and law, would you want to add to that?
Oh, that's pretty much it.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask a question about?
Certainly.
I did mention when this finance committee was here on the warrant articles, that might be better if you're going to change the, you know, increase the amount for the first article, just to say, to borrow or transfer from available funds, the sum to be determined for the purpose of boiler repair, or not.
Could you add that one more time, can you add to me?
Available funds, the sum to be determined.
Ah, okay, yep, okay.
For the purpose of, and you could actually use that for all of them, but since we really pretty much know that all of these are.
Okay.
Close enough.
And then I may share.
They will not exceed those numbers, then.
Good idea, excellent.
They may tell you to add the language, not to exceed blah, 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 but they'll get back to you.
They'll take, yeah, they'll do that.
But otherwise, I thought that looked good, and.
So on the audit, we do, if you could vote, I did provide actually some language for you, we need a vote for that, too.
It seems remarkable.
In the agenda item summary that I provided?
Yeah, a thousand dollars to audit eight hundred and seven dollars, I think.
No, 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 eight hundred and seven dollars is what's in just the interest earnings account, which we can use to pay for most of a thousand.
Okay, because.
Yeah, no, 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 actually, I got it down, the original quote was substantially, substantially higher than that, but I got it down to a thousand.
So this has to be done by an outside auditor?
Yes, I remember, as general law, an audit is required every year, but the business manager, if so approved by the school committee, the business administrator can do it annually, except every three years it must be done by an independent auditor.
And this hasn't been done in the.
Do they, do, does someone do an audit, or I guess the town does the audit for the elementary school?
Usually, usually the towns contract with an audit to do all the town books, and it usually includes the elementary.
Yeah, it's more the, yes, and it's more just a general fund, that's payables, payroll, and things of that nature, but also becoming to.
They're big accounts, I mean, the big accounts.
Yeah.
Because I know I've seen the audits for the town, and they'll have a little blurb about something or other for the school.
Yeah.
But do we do, you know, a bigger type of audit?
Well, I was going to bring that up at a future meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, there's another requirement, the end-of-the-year report needs to be audited, too.
Okay.
And that needs to be done, so I was going to bring that to you at a future meeting, I'm actually waiting for a quote. So I'm bringing that to you.
I know we had an audit at Tejano, at Berlin-Boilston.
Yes, that has been done.
Right.
Both the student activity and the end-of-the-year report, but not.
Okay.
Not the twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
Including the other elementary schools.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So I just, yeah.
Okay.
So I will be, I'm just waiting, I did make another call this morning, see if we can get that ASAP, you know, because I said we were redoing the budgets and things, so if we can get that incorporated in both Berlin-Boilston budgets.
Mm-hmm, okay, so, does anyone want to make this motion? To move to approve an audit be conducted on the Berlin Memorial School Student Activity Fund, the cost of the audit is not to exceed one thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Anything else to be said? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay.
We'll move on to the head injury and concussion policy.
This is the policy that, you know, you've already voted at the region, a lot of this was, of course, a policy dedicated towards, you know, high school athletics and sports and banned for people getting hurt on football fields, soccer fields, or any kind of sports, we've got the head injuries and concussion, but it also, it would be good to vote it at the elementary levels, because, you know, intramural sports, a variety of things you may, that you may conduct, like, it could be on the playground, you may have school the next day, something like this happens, you have a policy that will cover, that will cover you and protect the Berlin Memorial School in the unfortunate event of some type of head injury or concussion policy occurring on school grounds.
And just being doubles advocate here, but will this cover the Berlin School District? If it says Berlin-Boilston Public Schools, will that, I don't want anything to come up in the future that, you know what I mean?
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, good point, we'll change it to Berlin, yep, we should have changed it, we did.
I mean, if it works, it works, that's fine, but I wouldn't want them to say, well, you don't have a policy.
Now, that's a good point, yeah.
I'll take it, we'll change it.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but anyway, subject to changing that to Berlin, did you want to, go ahead.
Patricia, this should probably look consistent with the rest of our policies, and I'm not, I'm not remembering what our policies look like in the overall policy manual, but I don't remember seeing specific to Berlin or specific to Boilston, so it might respectfully suggest we might want to look at our policies and use similar language to what already exists.
I kind of figured this was the same as the one at the region, but I don't know, I don't remember.
I believe it's the same as the one that you did at the region.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. I mean, if you want, I will go back and I'll see if this language is consistent with other policies that have been voted at the elementaries along the regions, if it is, I'll change it.
I think we are pretty much.
If it is, I'll change it.
Right, right, that's a good idea, I mean, I tend to think they might all be.
It is.
Yeah, and I think they all speak to the public schools of Berlin and Boilston, all of the policies.
But when you put Berlin-Boilston, you think of the region, and I just wanted, if someone argues that you've got a policy covering concussion, head injury, or whatever, and you want to say that you have that policy, they may argue that, no, you don't, especially if it is mentioned as Berlin in other policies, but.
Yeah, I don't think it is, but I'll check, I think Judy's right, I think it does say Berlin-Boilston Public Schools.
Yeah, yeah, and that does refer to all three, anything that I've seen when I've been here, right, because it usually will say regional when you're talking about the regional school.
But we just did, we do our policy book a couple of years ago, and I don't think we've had anything come up.
Oh, no, we have, we've done.
No, I mean, someone arguing that, you know, you don't have a policy because it's Berlin or Boilston or anything, I don't think we've had anything like that come up.
We've also voted it under Union Sixty, and that's both individual schools, so really we're voting for it four times.
Right, just out of curiosity.
Yep, as long as we're consistent, that's what we need to be.
Right, right, so how would you like us to handle this, just wait and look at it again next month, or?
You can, or you can vote this evening, if there's a major change, I can bring it back, I don't think so, I think it'll be the way it is constructed.
Then why don't we just make the motion based on.
Looking at the policy book, checking it, the policy book? All right.
You have that on you?
Can you make that motion? So looking at the policies for Berlin, vote approval of the head injury and concussion policy? Nikki made that motion, did you?
Yes, I just, I'll move, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, schedule budget hearing day.
I don't know, you know, this is the past, but other committees I've been on, but generally there's been a budget hearing day, usually sometimes it might be set up like a half an hour before a regular scheduled school committee meeting to give the public, as you know, the opportunity to ask any questions they would like to ask regarding the proposed FY thirteen school budget, so we're in February now, so March is coming, so you may want to consider scheduling that, that budget hearing in March, of course, as you know, we have to put it in the newspaper labels.
And it has to be in so many days ahead of time of the date, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So if we were to vote tonight on a date, then it's plenty of time for, like, the next March.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's see, we're meeting on March fourteenth, is that the date?
I have fourth to fourteenth of March, correct.
Okay. So if we were to post the budget hearing for six thirty?
I think you'd be all set.
Do you think that'll work for you, Nikki? Nikki, six thirty?
Yeah.
How about you?
That's fine.
Okay, well, it must be on my calendar, so it must be fine with me. So, do you need to vote for that or just?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to schedule the budget hearing for March 14th at 6:30 PM?
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Reed Tyler, we put on the agenda again. I think I sent a copy of the will to several of you. And do you wanna remind us of what we were, or do you want me to try to?
Sure, you can try, go ahead, I mean.
The subcommittee had the question as to whether we wanted to change how the scholarship was disseminated. Perhaps with less recipients and, I don't know. It was still based on need and it was still based on the language in the will, which is. What is the language again?
Basically, I think.
Not as, not academic, but.
This is really trying.
Need-based and effort.
Yeah.
Right, effort, that's the word I was saying.
I think the, the one point that the subcommittee tried to make, that you needed to meet the criteria to qualify. And if you didn't, just because you applied, you wouldn't be necessarily getting funds. And even reading the will, this time I read it again, it even suggests that if you don't have any qualified candidates, that you roll it into the next year.
Right.
So I think that we really need to stick to the.
The wishes of the donor.
Correct, the wishes of the donor, which are need and not necessarily grades. And they're wanting to pursue an education, but not being able to. So I think we review the applicants and see if, maybe if any of them apply, you know.
Any of them qualify? Yeah.
Cause I think she was, this, I was reading this, it was pretty clear that what the donors' wishes.
Correct.
Were, and I think if, if we stick to that.
Correct.
To the donors' wishes and just the letter, you know, how it spelled out, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Right, we just need applicants to not assume that they're going to receive funds from the Reed Tyler's, gosh, cause they haven't applied.
I think in one year there was an applicant that did not get anything, cause he applied late. And we stuck to the criteria.
Right.
The application.
Great, the only thing I would ask, you know, we talked about reviewing the application. I wanted to ask the committee, the one on E, they're looking for a transcript. Not everybody, not everybody, a lot of the times, I don't know if we need to make this clear with some of the students, actually go and pay the fee to have a sealed transcript sent. I don't really think that's necessary.
Doesn't say sealed, where's, what page is that?
It's E.
Page three.
So I don't know if we can possibly.
Why'd they actually ask me that question?
And I just don't think it's necessary. I think even a report card would be fine for a copy of the transcript that they can pull off the computer as long as it's from the college.
So are you, do you know how you'd like to change the language or? Cause I think that's actually a good idea. It does cost a lot to have an actual transcript.
And it takes a lot of time.
Right.
And then on that piggyback of taking a lot of time, I know that the committee did ask if there was any way we could move this date up a little bit so we had enough time to get the work done for the first week in June for graduation. So do you know if this date, I know Cheryl is the one that has always, is it seems to coincide?
I don't think it's been advertised yet, it's like the la, it's the first Friday, I think, in May.
May.
Make a text, I mean, that, I mean, how much time are you looking for?
That would, that would probably be fine, because the part that's hard is somebody in the central office usually has to copy all of them and when there's thirty of them.
For different papers, if it's bad.
It takes a lot of time to, to, to read through them all.
Do we usually send out, make the applications available in March, isn't it, should we move that back to February and?
I think we should make it available as soon as we have it ready, I mean, the application.
Yeah, cause I think if you shorten the amount of time to.
Correct.
Kids will be kids.
Yes.
So.
Those are the only two things that I, I know that the committee did ask for a little more time. And even if we maybe just did it one week, it would, you know, would be.
So the last Friday in April?
April.
Okay, I don't know what that date is, but. So you'd like to have the last Friday in April as the due date, what was the other thing on the application?
Um, just not to really require an official transcript.
And, okay, just to change the language so that it doesn't, doesn't require?
Maybe we could have Cheryl wordsmith that for us. Right, not to require an official transcript.
Okay.
I don't know, you guys tell me if you feel like that's necessary.
That sounds, that sounds fine to me, or, I mean, do you really get people who are sending you the official transcripts?
I think we got two out of the thirty applications or so.
If you have any, you can attach a copy of your most recent transcript, you can just put parentheses, copies are, copies are acceptable.
Right.
So that means they can go anywhere, or just someone can copy one, pour them off the machine. Versus having the seal.
Right.
Coming to a sealed envelope, with a registrar.
Right.
The most, the most colleges, universities are pretty, pretty good about that.
Well, we can, we can make a vote as to that change and to the date change without a problem. Should be willing to call Cheryl and.
Sure.
And follow up with that.
Sure. Sure.
And then we can also probably.
Carol's not here to.
Disseminate.
As soon as possible, I would.
Right.
Say. Give everybody the most time possible to be able to apply.
Okay, did I make a motion? No? Okay. So do I hear a motion to have the last Friday in April as the due date for the scholarship? As, as, yeah. Recommended in the, in the application itself? And to change the language for the transcript. And to change, yeah, it's the same motion.
Okay.
And to change the language, not to require a.
On page three, section E.
Yeah, page E.
Page three, section E, just, just makes it easier to find it, okay.
Copies of transcripts acceptable.
Right, and like she said.
Yep.
All right, so did I include everything?
Yes.
And then, do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we covered? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. And I think we've been pretty good about trusting the subcommittee, what they recommend as far as recipients of the scholarship. I've always felt that never, doesn't, it's not a requirement that every single person get the scholarship, but then I think it is sort of a motivating factor for some kids. They, they don't always get scholarships because they don't, aren't need-based and they, they aren't academically a straight A student or something, which are the kids who usually get all of the scholarships.
Correct.
So I think it is nice that, that a good majority, but I would say, you know, if you're gonna recommend that someone not get the scholarship or that so many get them, I'm sure that the committee would support that.
We'll see what the subcommittee decides, we'll figure forth to you.
Okay.
To decide.
All right.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you. Public, school committee comments. You had a clear room.
Well, Cable Access has a comment, more just an update. So we're gonna be providing to the Berlin Memorial School a top-notch video editing station in the months to come. As soon as we can get it.
Boilston Memorial?
Berlin Memorial.
Okay.
Boilston?
Yeah.
Oh, hello. I gotta put a bet. So we're gonna do, put it in the library as, but hopefully they can put it to use in their editing and kids will be able to work on state-of-the-art equipment and have work, have the task complete in five minutes instead of five days.
Awesome, great. So does that mean their meetings will be over there at some point?
No, it won't be, all it is is an editing station like we have over here in the.
Oh, okay. Not live?
Not live.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thanks, any other comments? Future agenda items.
Two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school calendar and school lunch program.
Sounds good.
Budget.
And budget, yeah. And is there any other information at some point that will be shared about those positions? The additional positions or new type of positions that are in the budget?
Oh, it's in the part, I think, you talked about the part.
The central office person.
Yes, yes, I have been working on a job description and I have been working on that.
Just more data of some kind. Okay.
Okay.
We do have need for executive session?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and it's for the purpose of, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And I will, do I hear a motion?
So moved, to go into executive session. For the, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation.
Solely to emerge to adjourn the meeting.
Solely to emerge to adjourn the meeting in open session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Ruth?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.